I'm sorry.
This thing unplugged. Oh, you're gonna use it. Okay, nevermind. Yeah, of course. No. I'm just observing. That's worked out better, just leaving it down here.
Yeah. And here we go. All right, good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. and this meeting's called to order. This time, we'd like to ask that you turn off electronic devices to keep it from interfering with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, there'll be an application, will include presentation from city staff, followed by question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet here at the front, and please may direct all your comments to the board. Any questions you have that you might want to direct to the applicant, we will get those answered for you. All right, we've got a few items that we have to table. First three items on our agenda, so we're going to breeze through that and then we'll get to an actionable item. Earl's screen's not on. We're experiencing technical difficulty for Mr. Rice. The first item on our agenda is two zero two one dash five one eight. This is zoning request Z two one dash zero one five. This is to be tabled to the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. I have a motion to table Ms. Estriga. I have a second, Mr. Seagraves. Please vote. I'm gonna go with the motion passed, seven zero. Thank you. Somebody's got really fast fingers. Lightning. All right. The next item on our agenda is two zero two one dash five nine seven. This is zoning request Z two one dash zero one seven. The applicant's requested this item be tabled to the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. You have a motion to table this item, please. Motion to table, Mr. Smith. Second, Mr. Howard. All in favor? That item was tabled seven zero. Two two dash one four five. This is zoning request Z two two dash zero zero. To the April eleventh meeting as well. Can I motion to table this item? Motion, Mr. Phillips. Second, Mr. Smith. All in favor, please vote. Tabled seven zero. Excuse me. The next item is two zero two two dash one four six. This is a plat approval for two lots, for a two lot subdivision within the R fifteen zoning district. This is point nine one acres, land lot four eighty-seven. The applicant, Mr. Hester. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
Good evening. Joey Staub's Planner Two with Community Development. The subject property is eleven thirty-two Church Street. The applicant is wanting to subdivide this one lot into two lots. So this is the subject property outline in orange. It's R fifteen. It'll stay R fifteen and be similar to the adjacent lots around it. This is the proposed subdivision. It'll be a nineteen thousand square foot lot and a seventeen and a half thousand square foot lot. It'll meet all the R fifteen zoning setbacks. No variance is needed. So there's no variance or no rezoning required. This is formality. We're recommending approval of the subdivision with three conditions. One, that the subdivision looks like they presented to us tonight, that the water and sewer connection for the new lot is at the cost of the developer, and the new lot will have to provide water quality for the new lot. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Staub's?
Diagram. Can you go back to that, the one that showed? What is the red line?
The setbacks.
The setbacks?
My, uh...
All right.
Things didn't stay.
And I assume the second lot is gonna have access from Love Street?
Correct. So there's an existing house that is, faces Church Street. It'll be a new lot that faces Love Street.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the plan. Let the record show there. Good evening.
Tony Hester.
Welcome.
I'm selling the lot. Whoever the builder is is gonna be able to answer most of your questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Hester. This is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Okay? Any further comments? All right. For that, I'd like to entertain a motion. Have a motion, Mr. Bentley? Got a motion to approve? Thank you, sir. All right. The application's approved, seven zero. Good luck, Mr. Hester. All right, the next item. Four seven. This is zoning request Z two two dash zero zero two. Allowing rezoning from general commercial to R fifteen for an addition to a single-family home, point three eight acres, land lot four fifty-three. This is thirty-three eighty-two Ridgecrest Road, PLR Properties Incorporated. Mr. Staub's?
This is rezoning case Z two two dash zero zero two. The applicant is requesting a rezoning. Your recommendation will go to mayor and council on April eighteenth. This is the subject property at thirty-three eighty-two Ridgecrest Road. It has an existing single-family home on the property, but it's owned general commercial. So it's a legal non-conforming use that can remain that way unless there's an addition or a new house built. So they're coming to request it be rezoned to R fifteen, which is the zoning district that it would fit most in. Most of the properties around it are a fifteen. There is another non-conforming lot to the south that's general commercial. But the land use is moderate density residential. It'll stay moderate density residential, as well as most of the lots around it. This is the subject property. This the existing house, and they're doing an addition to the back, which requires a rezoning. This is a picture of the subject property and adjacent properties. Staff is recommending approval with the one condition that the property be developed in substantial compliance with the site plan submitted with the rezoning application. Any questions?
Any questions from? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Pam Tatum. I am the president of PLR Properties. We purchased this property last year and thought it was already zone commercial, excuse me, residential, as the other properties are. Upon submitting the proposal for the addition, we were informed that it was, in fact, commercial, zone commercial. Therefore, we had to go through this process of getting it rezoned. My understanding, talking with Mr. Staub's, is that it is actually slated to be rezoned commercial, excuse me, I keep saying commercial, residential in the twenty forty plan. We're a little ahead of that, so therefore we have to...
You don't wanna wait till twenty forty?
Well, I'd like to wait, but I'd like you to go ahead and just weigh the fees of me having to pay to have it done. But yeah, we were just adding an addition, master suite, taking it from a two one to a three two. And we've already got the proposal site plan submitted and ready for that once we get approval on the eighteenth.
Good. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bentley?
Yes. So when you're done, what's the approximate square footage you'll have in the house?
I don't have in front, I don't have my phone in front of me. I believe we're taking it from about a nine hundred to about sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what price point you think you'll be selling it?
So right now, you know, that's changing. Actually, this may be in our favor. But I know the, some of the homes have sold around four hundred mark, and we're hoping that it will be even higher than that when we get through.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion. I have a motion, Mr. Seagraves. Is that a motion to? Ms. Estriga? Please vote. Your application is approved, seven zero. Good luck with your, your project, Miss Tatum. Stuff going on, but I can't make you stay. He can, the guy with the taser. He can make you stay. I can't make you stay. Just kidding. All right. The next item on the agenda, we just love having people here. We do. We just don't get, we do this in front of empty rooms all the time. It's crazy. The next item on our agenda is two zero two two dash one four eight. This is zoning request Z two two dash zero zero three to allow rezoning from light commercial to R fifteen for the construction of a new single-family home. Six thirty-five Hickory Hill Drive. Mr. Shoemaker is the applicant. Mr. Staub's is gonna give us the background.
This is rezoning case Z two two dash zero zero three. Your recommendation will go to mayor and council on April eighteenth. It's very similar request as the one before. It's on Hickory Hill Drive. It's zone limited commercial, but it has an existing single-family house on it. The applicant wants to demo that house and build a new house, which requires the rezoning. We're recommending it be rezoned to R fifteen, which is similar to the other properties around it. Future land use is moderate density residential. It will remain moderate density residential, just like the other houses around it. This is the subject property. It'll have the R fifteen setbacks, front thirty-five, side ten, rear. We're requesting ten feet of right-of-way dedication, so it'll match the right-of-way to the north, as well as sidewalk. This is the subject property and adjacent properties. We're recommending approval, the rezoning to R fifteen, with four conditions. That it be developed in substantial compliance with the site plan, two, that they provide the five-foot sidewalk and two-foot grass strip, three, that they dedicate ten feet of right-of-way along Hickory Hill Drive, and four, that they meet stormwater measurements, requirements requested by the city engineer. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Staub's? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicants in attendance, if they'd like to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Hal Shoemaker, and I own the property at two six three five Hickory Hill. I bought it back in October as a foreclosure and quickly found out that it was limited commercial when we went to pull permits. So we're stuck here today trying to get this changed so that we can redevelop the property.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
I have my...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have my standard questions. So, so what do you plan to build there?
So it'll be approximately a four thousand square foot house over basement. What is it, four bedrooms, four and a half baths, something along that unfinished basement, typically keeping with, you know, the sort of that farmhouse look everybody's looking for today.
So what, what kind of price point you think you'll end up with there?
Well, you know, that's a moving target today, isn't it, now with price of lumber and price of everything else? We would anticipate being somewhere in the one one to one two million.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Shoemaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. All right. No participation from the audience, the overwhelming crowd tonight. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve, Mr. Phillips. Have a second, Mr. Seagraves? Your application is approved, seven zero. Good luck with your project, sir. All right. Two two dash one four nine. This is zoning request Z two two dash zero zero four. This is to allow rezoning development of two single-family homes. It's point three five acres and land lot six thirty-two, twenty-seven sixty-one Matthews Street, McBev One LLC is the applicant. Mr. Staub's the background, please.
This is rezoning case Z two two dash zero zero four. Again, your recommendation will go to mayor and council on April eighteenth. Subject property is twenty-six seventy-one Matthews Street. It is about point three five acres. The applicant is requesting rezoning from R fifteen to RDA conditional for the development of two single-family detached homes. The land use is medium-density residential, which allows up to six units per acre, and this will be about five point seven one units per acre. This is the proposed property. It's one lot now. It would be subdivided into two lots. It'll have the RDA setbacks, the front twenty-five, side five, and rear thirty. I were requesting right-of-way dedication along Matthews Street with sidewalk. It'll have rear entry garages with a shared access drive that will connect to the other property of Village of Williams Park. And there will be individual stormwater detention facility at the rear. There is one variance to allow, a lot width reduction from fifty feet to forty feet. Which is similar to the other lots on the street. They range forty to forty-five, forty-eight. This is the proposed home elevations, the front and the rear, and then the sides. This is the subject property. There's one house on it now. And adjacent properties. Staff is recommending approval, the rezoning to RDA with the following conditions. Standard conditions regarding the composition of the architecture. Tree planting. Special conditions, number eight is the front setback of twenty-five, rear five, and, sorry, side five, rear thirty. Have a minimum lot size of seventy-five, sixty. Minimum lot width of forty feet. Twelve, it requires the right-of-way dedication. Thirteen, that Matthews Street will be widened to meet the current dimension to the south. Fourteen, five-foot sidewalk and grass strip. Fifteen, a maximum height of thirty-five feet. Sixteen, fire access requirements. Seventeen, water and sewer requirements. Eighteen, stormwater management requirements. Nineteen, that it'll be developed in substantial compliance with the site plan and the elevation submitted with the application. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Staub's. Any questions for Mr. Staub's? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit...
Good evening. My name is Jim Beveridge. I reside at nineteen ninety Country Squire Road, Marietta, Georgia, three zero zero six seven. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a continuation of an existing project that we've been developing over the past five years or so, and it's called The Village at Williams Park. Last year, we submitted this project for three awards with the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association, and we were pleased to report to you that it was awarded the Gold Award for the Single Family Attached Urban Redevelopment, Revitalization for all builders in the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association. This will be the twenty-first and twenty-second lot. We currently have nineteen lots. Nine are townhomes and ten are planned, or ten are single-family. These would be two more single-family homes that would add to the success of the project. We also were awarded Single Family Attached All Builders, the four hundred to four ninety-nine price range on the townhomes, and you may note those at the corner of Matthews and Spring Street. The new townhomes that have recently gone up. We are also awarded the Silver Award for a detached model from four hundred to four hundred ninety-nine thousand. So we, we don't see any more, but we do see this as two good lot additions to that project.
Thank you, Mr. Beveridge. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bentley?
Just kidding. I'm just messing with you.
Basically, the same questions I've been asking. So what are the, what are the square footages on these houses?
So these will be a little bigger than the original five that we did that are just south of this. They were twenty-seven hundred square feet. These will be three thousand square feet, and the reason is, we discovered after COVID, we needed to make the family room, open concept family room and kitchen a little bigger. So we added six feet depth to the house. They'll have the same general floor plan, the same exterior look, but they'll be six feet deeper. So that'll add six feet to the depth of the family room and kitchen, open kitchen. It'll also, actually, I'll also add six feet to the master bedroom above that, and we're bringing the staircase up the middle to have any more square footage like we did on the townhomes. So they'll be three thousand square feet. We envision these homes to be in the seven hundreds price range.
Okay, just, just one other question. I think you said this, you thought this would be the last two lots in there. There, there's a house to the north.
Yes, sir.
It's basically like this one.
Yes, sir.
You don't anticipate...
To the south or to the north? This is the one to the north.
Right, but there's one more to the north of the project you're proposing.
Yeah.
And then a vacant lot after that.
Right. I can't predict anything beyond this one. I really can't.
Okay. Thanks.
We don't have anything underway. There are five lots, and right now, these split between the first two on the left and the first three on the south. So we already envisioned the first two more on the south, which would make five on the south, and this would make four on the north. So it'd be fairly consistent. I can't envision more, but we do, I should point out, as the declarant of the neighborhood, we do have the option of within a thousand feet of the original neighborhood of annexing property, and that began in two thousand seventeen. So I guess it's possible, but we have no plans at this point.
Is there an expiration on that thousand?
The expiration is ten years from the original declaration, which is twenty seventeen. So it would probably be twenty twenty-seven, somewhere in that, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. I'm not exactly sure when we declared, but somewhere in that neighborhood.
Interesting. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Beveridge? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward, speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Let the record reflect, there's no... Let the record reflect, there's no participation from the overwhelming audience. Sometimes give us a little back and forth. All right, anyway, any? Would like to entertain a motion. Motion, Mr. Seagraves. Is that a motion to, a motion to approve? And a second, Mr. Smith. This motion is approved six to one, and somebody, six to one with Mr. Bentley in opposition, six to one. Mr. Beveridge, good luck with your. The process. All right. The last item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the February 14th, 2022 meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made to the minutes, or do we have a motion to approve as presented? I have a motion, Ms. Estriga, to approve. I have a second, Mr. Smith. The minutes are approved. Six to one. Who abstained on the, on the? Oh, I'm sorry, six to one. Thank you. Well, you know what? We got somebody that follows the rules. Six to one with no opposition, just abstaining. A Beveridge, no offense to Mr. Beveridge who just left. Anyway, the, any further discussion, any comments? No? Any welcoming or renewing? Nothing? Okay. All right, anyway. I will make you sit here. No, I'm just kidding. This meeting is called at 6:30. I was hoping he would.